I'd like to welcome everybody to a special meeting of the Guilford and Planning Zoning Commission. The purpose of this meeting tonight is to discuss and clarify some of the legal points that the commission has asked counsel for additional clarification on, and also to review the special permit criteria and have a discussion and deliberation. I do not expect that we will be voting on this this evening. Counsel will be working with town staff to develop motions both for and against, depending upon how everything plays out. Everyone should be aware that the public hearing is closed, so there will be no public comment accepted. This is really just a meeting which you're more than welcome to enjoy for us to further clarify what's been received. We've received a lot of material on this, and we want to make sure that we understand it all properly and hopefully come to a correct conclusion. So with that said, I will kick it over to George for the sake of clarification. Sean Cosgrove, Matt Juzinski, Dick Wallace, I'm Phil Johnson, Frank DeAndrea, Alan Brown, and Scott Edman, thank you all for coming.
Okay. First of all, in terms of participation in this discussion, the alternate, who's probably not going to be voting on this application, should not be participating in the discussion. Although you're certainly welcome and desire to sit and listen, but you should not be speaking or talking with the commission. I believe that's the legal...
Sir, we came here...
Okay. I was just counseling the alternate member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Under Connecticut law, he will not be voting on this matter unless a vote occurs at a meeting where he is replacing one of the regular members. But he's not with the expectation that he will not be voting. He should not be participating in the discussion that the commission is going to be engaged in over the next hour. And that's pretty much our advice on that point. All regular members who have either attended both public hearings or attended one or none would only be voting if they have viewed the videotape or the YouTube video of the public hearing. If they haven't done that, then they're not entitled to vote, in which case the alternate would be voting. But I believe all members have either viewed the tape and/or attended both public hearings.
For the sake of clarification, you were at both meetings, correct? You've reviewed the materials online and gone down?
I was at one and went down to town hall to review and watch the video on the one I wasn't here for.
Terrific. And Alan, you were at both? Yes. And so was Scott. Thank you.
In terms of the, maybe just sort of getting the discussion started, there's a couple of different areas of uncertainty about a couple of different legal questions that have been asked. One set of questions relates to the building height, and what is the proper allowed building height, and what are the specific circumstances of this project with regard to building height? There's a question of interpretation, I think, that's required of the commission in that regard. That's one topic that we can discuss right now. Second set of questions relates to the display of motor vehicles for rent by U-Haul, and the entitlement, if any, that this property owner and applicant has to display motor vehicles within the 50-foot setback from the street line. Under the current zoning regulations, motor vehicle display is not permitted within 50 feet. The project is proposing the display of seven trucks as part of their site plan within that 50-foot area, and their argument is that they're entitled to do that based on history and based on their rights associated with previous display of motor vehicles for sale or rent. Chuck can elaborate on that a little bit more. There are actually two sort of related questions that pertain to that issue of the display of motor vehicles. There's also a number of questions in terms of legal issues about advertising and the extent to which the vehicles that are rented or sold, in this case rented, are subject to rules that might pertain to signs or other kinds of advertising. And we can also, maybe with Chuck's help, discuss that particular issue. Those are the two main areas of legal interpretation in question that I think are on the table. The other set of issues that I think the commission needs to weigh are the, have to do with the satisfaction of the special permit criteria with respect to the proposed self-storage building, which is a new building on the property. Self-storage is a special permit use in this zone, and therefore, the commission has certain amount of discretion with regard to considering whether or not the proposed building and use satisfy the special permit criteria, especially with regard to issues of harmony with the adjoining areas, adjoining neighborhood, adjoining properties, and question of whether or not the proposed activity is in some way out of scale with those criteria that are described in the zoning code. That's my summary of what I think the basic questions are. As you know, the Design Review Committee has gone over extensively the design issues associated with the proposed activity, the landscape design, the lighting design, the building architecture, and I know you received a report from them at their last meeting. In terms of zoning compliance, the proposed activity complies to the best of mine, the best I can determine with all the quantitative and other standards of the zoning code. The uses are either permitted, in the case of motor vehicle, or in the case of self-storage, are permitted by special permit. Maybe I could say a couple of things about the issue of height, the building height. As I explained in a memo that I submitted to the commission, there is some ambiguity in how we interpret and measure building height with respect to what the starting point is when considering a building height measurement. The regulations allow, in this particular case, a building up to 40 feet above grade. Forty feet in this grade, this maximum elevation, is measured by drawing an imaginary line around the perimeter of the proposed building, measuring the elevation, the average elevation all around that perimeter or around that line, and then, in this particular case, the building would be allowed to go up to 40 feet above that average elevation. And the question at issue is, to what extent does previous grading or filling of the site affect that baseline measurement, that baseline from which you measure to the maximum height, in this case 40 feet? As was discussed in the public hearing, this site was, there was fill placed on this site approximately 10 years ago as part of highway, the renovation of I-95. Department of Transportation placed a huge pile, some of you may remember it, of ground-up material on the property as part of their highway renovation. That material was never permitted by the town or by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Some amount of that material, I think the DOT considered it to be, and many of us at the time, I think, considered it to be a temporary use and a temporary accumulation of that material. Much of it was taken off of the site. I know the town took a large amount of it, the Public Works Department did for its use. Others, I believe others took material off the site, but some of it was also regraded on the site on this particular property. There's been some allegations that several feet of fill were placed in the vicinity of the proposed new building, and if you deduct that two or three feet of fill from the measurement, that would make the current building, which is 40 feet above that average grade that I described, that would make that actually two or three feet too high if you consider the grade, the appropriate grade from which to measure being the grade prior to the grading of the site that occurred in 2008, I think it was. This is an issue that we've talked about before, especially in staff, as to how you interpret that. I think it goes to kind of how long ago did this material or did this grading take place? And what's the intent of the zoning regulations with regard to that particular provision of the regulations? We'd never, you know, I think one would feel, and we certainly feel, I certainly feel, if the material or the regrading took place a long time ago, whatever that means, you probably wouldn't try to ascertain what the grade was a long time ago to measure the 40 feet of the maximum height. However, if the grading and filling took place a couple of weeks ago as part of this particular application or by this same applicant, then that would, you would treat it differently. Somewhere in between is perhaps where we are today, and that's probably, and I think that's going to be subject to your interpretation as to how one should weigh in on that.
It's pretty easy to define what was brought in, though, versus what was probably there before because it's millings versus soil.
Right. Yes, correct. Right.
Do we know what the depth of the millings are?
The opposition referred to one of the site plans, which is the sanitary leaching field, where they actually did soil borings. And there is a couple of the soil borings, one which looks like it's probably 15 feet away from the building, where the first 24 inches or two feet were asphalt fill, according to the plan. And so that's their claim, since they're right at 39.9 or whatever, that if you add 20, basically two feet of fill, so they're over. That's their claim.
And does it affect the average that you do? Does it affect the foot print?
Well, what we don't know is whether that two feet of fill is uniform around approximately where that building is going to be placed, or whether it's, it appears to be fairly uniform. But, you know, in order to determine precisely how much material there is there, you'd have to do some more testing around that perimeter in order to determine whether it's exactly two feet or three feet or one foot or whatever it might be.
Most of the regulations, if I'm recalling right, refer to natural grade?
I believe it's, I think that word is in there.
The word says, "average grade is defined as the existing ground level prior to any site preparation, grading, or filling of the lot."
But that wording, would you interpret that to be, that work being associated with the building of the buildings?
That's the question before you.
Right, right. That is the question. The text is silent. What the regulations say is that when you have a doubt as to how interpretation, it says, "Doubts as to the precise meaning of terms of the meaning, application, interpretation shall be determined by the commission in accordance with the purpose and intent of these regulations where the context so permits." So the regulations say, "If it's not clear, then it's up to you guys to interpret it in light of the intent and the context."
And just to follow up on that, if this were to be appealed and it was based on our interpretation of our regulations, what's the difference versus an appeal based on an application of our regulation?
What's the difference between, in other words, if you found, here's the argument either way. The argument on appeal is if you say, "We're interpreting this to mean average grade," as George said, that the average grade in connection with the project, that's the implication, that they would, the argument would be, "That's not what it says." You know, it doesn't say that words. You know, you could have said it if you wanted to. That's the argument. The other argument, the argument that was made at the public hearing is that, and even the opposition said this, that there's rare, you rarely find any virgin, you know, land in developed area. On Route 1, it's a fairly developed area. So there is going to be some sort of development, and if you take this literally, you got to go back to whenever, when it was the first development. I mean, it says, "Prior to any site preparation." So was there any grading, filling, or site, was anything done to this lot? For all we know, in the 1800s, there could have been a big rocks on the lot, whatever. So what does it mean? Is that what you really meant? And what the arguments were at the public hearing is that, basically, George's argument is what the plaintiff said, is yeah, that it should be in relation to the project. The opposition said, "Sure, we agree that, you know, there's been developed lots all over the place, but there's no indication that for any filling on this lot that you, that there was a special permit obtained because there is a provision in the regulations for you to do grading and filling and excavation if you get a special permit, but there was no evidence presented about that." I don't know if that makes any difference, frankly, whether they got the permit for it or not, but that was the argument. Those were the arguments that were made, and I can, you know, I can give you what I think.
What's the standard of review for our body interpreting our regulations?
Typically, the court will give some deference to the commission's interpretation of their own regulations, but they won't just say, "We'll agree with whatever you say."
No, I know, I just, is it de novo review? Or is it?
It's a question of law because it's interpretation of the regulations, but they give deference to a commission's interpretation of its own regulations in the context.
Consistent with what Phil said at the beginning of the meeting, we're not asking you to make this determination right now. We just want you to be aware of the issue, and when we draft proposed motions, you know, we'll try to incorporate some kind of findings on both sides of this particular issue as part of those motions. So you don't have to decide this right now as to how you feel collectively.
You don't. But I'd like to know what you hear or what your questions are. It'll help us in drafting motions.
Give me the amount of material we need to go through. How does everyone feel about kind of discussing this, you know, after each topic, as opposed to trying to absorb it all and then come back to each one?
Well, it's still fresh, I agree.
So why don't I throw out the first comment and let everyone discuss? I personally feel that, you know, the amount of time that the fill has been there, it's within a reasonable period of time, and we all agree that it's fill. It hasn't been there since the 1800s. It wasn't a farm that got leveled. We all know when it was and how it was placed there, and the fact that it's quite different from, you know, the ground underneath it. Now, that's not to say it's not clean fill, it's just stating that it is material that was brought in. Sean, help me. You get to go next.
You know, I'm thinking about the fact, you know, George referenced, there's nothing in the code about long ago, very long ago, recently, there's no definition of those terms. To my thinking, 10 years ago is not a long time ago. So I'll just say that.
I think, according to the definition, it uses the word "existing," which I think adds some element of time to the definition. And also that...
Existing elevation?
It just uses the word "existing," which I think just, that word, I think, adds some dimension of time to the element of the definition. And that, I just wanted to get some clarification about how, if the measurement prior to the fill, the average grade of the measurement prior to the fill, if you measure from that mark, then how is that going to make the building too high? Because my understanding is that the fill would increase the elevation of the total height in the building.
Right. There's two feet of, this building is proposed to be 40 feet, which is measured by that, around that 10-foot perimeter on the existing, from the existing ground level, which includes two feet, quote, we think, or approximately, two feet of fill. So that places this building two feet higher than it would otherwise be allowed. They should, by this, if you interpret it that way, the way you're asking, then they need to redesign the building so it's two feet less high.
Or they can excavate the fill.
Or they can remove the fill.
Right.
And then this is a moot point.
Or grade the fill away from where the building is located, you know, they could, there are a number of strategies that they could...
But that's not what's presented to us.
That's not what's proposed, correct.
Do we know what the volume of the fill is? Do we have any sense of yards and the amount of work and cost that would be associated with moving around or removing it?
All we really know is that, based on that test, that test bit result, and I don't know if that's the only test bit in the vicinity of where the fill is, that it was two, that there was two feet of this material. Whether that's two feet uniformly on the whole area or not, I have no idea. I mean, an engineer could calculate this, but we don't know the number.
We also don't know the depth at all in spots.
Right, could be much deeper in some spots, much less in others, obviously.
There were six text, test bits. The one I got was the closest one. Again, I'm estimating probably 20 feet away, and that was the two feet. The other ones are further away, but they ranged from a low of 20 inches to a high of 45 inches.
Do they all have to sit underneath the footprint of the building for this to be relevant?
Really, the only relevant measurement is that 10-foot imaginary line around the perimeter.
Okay, 10 feet around the perimeter of the building.
Right, that's the measure, that's the elevation. The average of all those points around that perimeter, that's the elevation from which you'd measure to the maximum height.
So if you measure from the lowest elevation prior to the fill, the argument is that that's going to make the building two feet higher?
Then it would be allowed.
If you build it on top of the fill versus...
So if you build it on top of the fill, then the building is going to be in compliance and lower and lower.
No, if you build it on top of the fill, then you're going to be over the 40-foot limit.
So you're going to lower the level of the building or remove the fill?
Right.
There are only two options.
Getting back to that, I don't know if the reason they used the fill was because of low spots or to degrade the parking lot. But I was on Public Works when they took it up to Dump Dump, and that was a long haul. But I think I'm understanding what Chuck is saying and the way it's been explained, that this is on top of the, what the original grade was, and you found depths from few inches to 40 something inches.
Correct, but some of those test bits were further away. These were made for the subject. Now, they have nothing to do with this, but one of them happened to be close to there, and that's what they're doing. And the applicant didn't dispute that. Their argument was that, well, from the, from the street level, we're actually looking lower because of the grade that goes down, but I think they clarified, no, but it still is 39.9. You know, it's right up the top, so...
When they did their set application, they measured from the average grade that's on top of the fill.
Correct. From the existing...
If you were to walk out there now and say, "What's the height that you're walking?"
Right.
I will point out, they moved the building back. In moving the building back, I don't know this, did they gain height or did the average elevation go up or down based on the fact they were willing to move the building back further from the street?
They spoke at the public hearing to the effect that the site gradually goes downward towards I-95. How much difference in grade there is, I don't really know. So in fact, the architect, I think, or this engineer testified that the profile of the building, as you saw from the street, was actually, was going to be lower, therefore, because they moved the building back, whatever distance it was, 20 feet further back than originally proposed.
Yeah, does, I'm just looking at the contours, it looks like it's slightly higher. I got a spot elevation of 72 at the front, and at the back of the building, it's like 70, so I guess it does slow down on existing conditions.
So did you all measure it on top of the fill? And they're saying that that is in compliance with the zoning regulations? And then the opposition is saying that you need to measure from the prior fill before the, before the fill, and then that's...
Right. Yeah, the essential, the applicant's position would be similar to, that the implication here, prior to any site preparation, grading, or filling, the implication is, with respect to this project, or, you know, not something right recent, even though it doesn't say that, that's what it means. It can't mean, you know, virgin, because any developed land is going to have some type of, you know, grading or filling or something done, so it can't mean that. So that's a logical, you know, this has been there for whatever, it wasn't done in connection with the project. This is, it's a fairly flat site, so this is what, you know, we didn't do this, we didn't do this to make our building higher, so you shouldn't do it. That's their argument, and you know the other arguments.
That goes to the question of intent.
You were going to be preparing kind of side by side.
We can't. We can do a motion for and against unless it was, unless you gave us a clear direction. I mean, if everyone agrees that it's negative or if everyone agrees it's positive, then maybe we won't bother, but, you know, we can do both. That's not unusual.
By that, by the argument that the applicant's making, if you brought material in, if you brought three feet of material in now and left it there for eight to 10 years, that would then be considered the natural grade? Or the...
Yeah, I think that is, yeah, what does this mean? I think that's what their argument was.
I think they're partly, the issue partly goes to, and this is, this is the way, this goes to the question of what's the intent of the provision in the first place? And I think the intent is to prevent people from filling property in order to build higher than they would otherwise be allowed. So there's an implication, use of the word preparation, site preparation, that you're doing this in order to achieve some higher profile of the building. It's not that the building is going to have more distance between the ground floor and the top floor, it's that you want, you're using, you're filling in order to make the building higher in terms of total elevation, and that probably wasn't the intent here since that fill was placed there by, not by U-Haul, but actually by the DOT as a temporary quote-unquote "storage site" for their mill. U-Haul, but actually by the DOT as a temporary quote unquote storage site for their millings, some of which was taken off the site, but much of which was not and was then regraded.
Given the limited amount of time we have for the next two items, should we just ask for a side by side and then-
Sure.
Let me do that.
Right.
Good? Alan, you good? Any comments?
Well, the state put the soil there without a permit. And now we're faced with the fact that we got to delegate this thing. And actually, I can see U-Haul's point because they didn't put the soil there and it should have been removed after it was put there. And so I, I don't, I don't see where we can really find or give them a hard time about this. Something probably should be done if you want to bring it down to level. Somebody's going to have to pay to grade it out. That's the smartest way to do it. Grade it out and get rid of it. But is the state going to pay for that? No. And they're the ones that are the problem. Not U-Haul or the people that own the property. They didn't ask for it on their property and were not told probably. So it's a tough question for us, but it's, it's a tough one.
How are we feeling, Josh?
I think it's pretty clear. Natural ground level is defined as the existing ground level prior to any site preparation, grading or fill of the lot. Doesn't seem ambiguous to me. I mean, unless we want to further define what this is, then we should, we should do that, but at this point.
And I guess you think about it. We see a lot of applications for renovations or construction near the water. And if, you know, prior owner wanted to make a lot more desirable and you brought in fill, whether it was done permitted or not permitted, they usually do soil samples or something like that to find out what the natural grade is. Is that right, George? So it's not just similar to that?
I mean, one new point about intent of the regulations, something to keep in mind. That it be, that it was designed to preclude, prevent, prohibit someone from playing the game of putting fill in and then, you know, for the, for the purpose of having a building that was higher than was intended by the regulation.
Finding that this building, the proposed building does not conform to the height limitations of the zoning code are that you therefore cannot approve it. Although I guess it's conceivable you could approve it with some kind of condition that it be, that the plan be redeveloped or redesigned, but I think that would be probably not the most desirable strategy. If you find that this building is too big, too tall, based on your understanding of the definition, you, regardless of the, all other merits of the application, correct me if I'm wrong, Chuck, I think you would be required, quote un, to deny the application.
If U-Haul does measure from the grade prior to the fill, would they have to alter any of the construction costs or alter the architecture or any of the design or construction of the plan at all, or can they still go through with the plan as is even if they do just simply measure from the grade prior to the fill?
The building now is designed to be 40 feet above that existing grade, so they have to reduce the height of the building by a certain amount. How they would do that, you know, I don't really know, but that's what they would have to do. They could, they could remove the material and go with exactly the same design, but that would require, that would be a modification to the site plan. Or they could redesign the building so that it's not quite as big or tall, as tall. Either way, they'd have to come back with a new application, is what would be my, the way I would understand this.
Plus a resolution where the gradings would go.
I'm sorry?
Plus a resolution, Kevin, where the gradings would go.
Right. They'd have, I mean, you could remove the material, you could regrade it somewhere else on the site so it doesn't have this impact on the, how you measure height or number of different ways it could be done. I don't know which would be practical or feasible.
Go to the next topic, please.
Okay, sorry. Display of motor vehicles? Okay. So, so that's the issue of the nonconformity. The, the application in their site plan is proposing to have displayed, they called display parking, parking of, of U-Haul vehicles. I believe there's seven that are within, I believe about 20 feet from the front. And the regulations, I believe, require a 50-foot setback. And then there's also on the other side, I think we have two front yards here, right? So this, so I think there may be a couple on this side too, although I'm looking at the site plan, it doesn't, I don't actually see parking spaces, but the Tanner Marsh side there, the focus seemed to be more on the, on the Boston Post Road. So the, so the arguments are, why can you do that? Why is that in, in the regulation, is the regulation in, that says, "No motor vehicles shall be parked, stored or displayed within 50 feet of the front property line, 25 feet of the side property line or 25 feet of any residential zone building line." So I think you've got two front property lines, so the 50-foot line goes all along the whole thing. And, and this shows the, the seven parking spaces right within that. So the issue is why, why do they claim that they, they can do that? You know, the regulations say 50 feet and they show seven with encroaching that. And their claim, they've made two claims. Their claim is that they can do it by virtue, it's a nonconforming use. Their claim is that this has always been a car dealership, a motor vehicle dealership, and it's, it started in the 60s and it's been continuing since then. And even though in 2010, they got the approval for the Grass Island Market, they still continued to do some motor vehicle renting, it's actually U-Haul renting, and they never intended to abandon their right to use all of the spaces in the front that they had. And what I did, we put in the record what the Grass Island Market was, it was approved. So you can see, it was sort of bare bones. This wasn't, I, I don't think you, you didn't require a whole lot, you know, you weigh some of the site plans, but you can see that there's some probably customer parking on the front and, and over in the side. And that, that's what, that's what they can do now. That's what you approved and that's what they can continue to do. And what they're proposing now is this, which has, again, these seven vehicles right here. And again, I don't see striped spaces, but maybe parts of these are, are part of the parking as well, so maybe part of that over here. So that, that's, and their claim is that I, we never intended to abandon our right to park vehicles in front. And they submit an affidavit from their guy who said, "I never intended to do this." And then the opposition by Mr. Lambert made a couple of claims. One is that he said that there's a different type of parking going on. It's, it's motor vehicle trucks versus cars and whatever. But he, and he also said that they abandoned their right to do parking in the front in this 2010 approval because what they said, and he gave the transcript of the public hearing in the minutes, that even though they were doing some, they were going to do some parking of motor, I guess they continued to have the customer parking in the front. Anyone could do that. And, and this says, right now, it says, "Retail sales or rental of motor vehicles, you can have no motor vehicles shall be parked, stored or displayed." So that means, I mean, I read that as saying you can't have customer vehicles. Everything's got to be, it says no motor vehicles can be parked. Seems to me that's a customer or a display or whatever. That's what it says. So, so, you know, they retained the right to do customer vehicle, but they abandoned their right. And, and the regulations indicated, because I think one of the commissioners asked, "Where's the parking of the three or four motor vehicles going to be?" And they said it's going to be on this side and he pointed back over on this side over here. And so what, what that means to me is maybe the nonconforming right to park the vehicles on the Tanner Marsh roadside was retained. Because if they indicated that they're going to do U-Haul vehicles, they're going to park them on that side, then insofar as the two motor vehicles on, on motor vehicle, on the Tanner Marsh roadside infringe on that, that they've retained that right because you approved it, you know, and that's what was said there. But the question becomes, well, did they abandon this? And Attorney Lambert's argument was that it doesn't matter what your subjective intent was, it's what you say. And, and you applied for this another, another application, you said they would be there. So that, even if you subjectively thought that you were retaining the right to do it, that's not good enough. You've, you've got this different, and you've approved, you abandoned that use, you got a different use except for that, so you can no longer do that. So that, that is the, those are the arguments that are made. Their argument is they didn't abandon it and they, Mr. Lambert's argument was, yes, you did because you applied and received another permit and it didn't allow, the customer part could be parked over here presumably, but, but, but not the display vehicles.
Automobiles and trucks.
Who knows rental versus sale?
Right. There is, there is that distinction as well. I, I think his main argument is abandonment, but his, he also said that he made a lot of hayway into that. It should be noted that the rental vehicles are permitted. I mean, it's, it's not so much, the way I'm looking at this, the, the use itself, you can park rental vehicles on the site, you can park, on the site. What is prohibited is where you park it. It's the parking of, of the things. And before they only parked cars and now they're parking here, but it's the location. It's not that you can't park, the regulations prohibit, it's where this is. So yeah, there, there is a different, you know, I made a distinction between cars and that, that it's, it's, it's not the same use in this location, it's a different use in this location. But again, it's, it's, the, the use is allowed, you know, you can do it, but you can't allow it here. The parking, the parking part of it is the nonconforming part of it. But, so, so I, I thought that their, their argument, and there's another provision in regulations that once you get towards a more conforming use, you can't go back. That's, that's in 273-13. And there's some case law that supports that. So that, that I thought was, that, that was, that was emphasized by, by-
Does there have to be abandonment? Or does the, do the practices of the owners by virtue of just not continuing the same practice, they don't actively abandon, but if they're, but they don't continue to do it, do they retain the nonconform-
No, I mean, applicant's absolutely right. You have to show abandonment, you have to show intent. Simply discontinuing is not enough. Simply non-use is not enough. But the issue is by applying and saying, "I'm going to do this and insofar as I'm continuing rental, it's going to be over here, except for my, you know, the customer part of it can be there," then that is, is that, does that show that, satisfy the intent element? The, you intended to do that, you applied and received a new, a new use to do that.
Put you on a fork, but that's why we have you.
What about the argument about a special permit if we-
That's, I haven't gotten to that yet. That's, that's a different one. But I, I thought the, the, to me, it's, it's, it's a difficult sell to say that I'm going to, I'm going to represent to you guys that the parking is going to be at this place on the lot and because I subjectively think and don't say something to you that I, I'm really wanted to retain the right to do it in the front, then that, that to me is tough. That is a, that's a difficult argument to, that shows abandonment in my mind, but that, you know, whatever, I'm not, you could think otherwise, but that, I thought that was a strong argument. But I haven't gotten to the, the special permit argument, which is why he said, which is his reason why he thinks he, he might, may still be able to do that.
Is there a distinction between rentals, rental trucks, if you will, and U-Haul rental trucks, which are basically billboards, whether they're parked or moved? Because there's a very explicit section of the code that says trucks being used as billboards are not allowed.
Right. That's the third legal issue. We're, we're still on the nonconforming. You know, I, I could go into that one now, but, but that's a, but, but the second part of that is, is he said, even if, if you found I did abandon that, what he's claiming, what he said is he applied for a special permit under 273-13, which I'll just read it. It says, "No nonconforming use of land, buildings or other structures shall be changed to any use which is substantially different in nature or purpose from the existing nonconforming use," which agree this is, "except to a, except, no, I don't, except to a use which is permitted by the zoning in the district." In other words, you can change your nonconforming use to something that's permitted as a right, great, you know, then you're actually reducing nonconforming use. "Unless a special permit is granted by the commission pursuant to Article 10 and 2799 and upon the further finding that the new use will have no greater injurious impact upon the surrounding area than the existing use." So what this, this regulation allows you to do is to, even when you have a nonconforming use, by special permit, you can approve another nonconforming use. And what their argument is, is that this, they believe, is less injurious because they're reducing what they could do now in some respects. Because whereas before, right now, they can park customer, I don't think they can park, park the vehicles, but they could have, you know, someone driving onto the site, you know, if, if they had a dealership here and they had all their, or whatever, a customer presumably has the right, they can do customer, 21 parking spaces for customer vehicles in the front. And a front which is six and a half feet away. They could, they could continue that. And what they're proposing is instead of the 21 customer vehicles six and a half feet away, they're proposing seven vehicles 20 feet away. So their claim is that we are reducing part of the nonconformity that, and they're substituting right now, what I'm assuming is the regulation prohibits both customer and, because it says no motor vehicles can be parked, which I assume motor vehicles, a motor vehicle, if it's a customer or it's inventory or whatever, that's what it says. So they're, they're saying, instead of just having 21 customer vehicles in the front, we're going to limit it to seven vehicles that were for sale and we're pushing them further back. And you can do that, that's a trading of one nonconforming use for another if you find that to be less injurious. So there's your authority to get to approve that if you make those findings. That, that's his second, that's his second argument. And that I find to be a discretionary call by you guys.
So I guess the question's going to be, do we think that 21 customer cars-
Is more injurious than seven rental-
Than seven trucks?
And also the 21 customer cars are only six feet from Route 1 versus-
Versus what was 21?
I think you also have to consider like substantially different in nature or purpose also, which I, I don't think that the, I don't think that the U-Haul trucks being parked are any substantially different in nature or purpose than the cars parked there from the Chevrolet.
Significantly bigger.
I don't think it's substantially different.
So the two, kind of interpretation questions that you have there on that with regard to that display of motor, display of trucks for a rental.
Right. So the first one, do you believe then that he never abandoned the nonconforming use? And you could find that, yeah, he can do this because he, he was never abandoning, never showed the requisite intent? You have to show intent, non-use is simply not enough. And he never showed the requisite intent? And then the argument is, and then you can get into, well, it's different and was it abandoned by applying for a different use? That's, that's that one. And then the second one, even if you do find he did abandon and that he can't do it, then you have, do, do you find this substitution of this different nonconforming use to be less injurious than that and do you want to do that? And you look at the other special permit criteria. If it's a special permit, you can look at harmony with- harmony with the neighborhood and everything else. It's not, you know, it's not simply only, it's not like injuriousness is the only criteria. All the special permit criteria come in in 273-80A.
I think it'd be a lot less authority for us as a commission to make the ruling on the special permit versus making a ruling on abandonment of the nonconforming use. Would, right, would you agree with that? Or it doesn't matter?
I think that, that's a stronger argument. Yeah. I mean, I, I, I mean, but I'm not, you know, whatever. You judge the credibility. You, you just decide who you believe and whatever. But just from what was presented.
It's important to keep in mind that the, the, what makes this a special permit use is a self-storage, the use. It's not the building, although obviously the use is in a specific building. A 50,000 square foot office building would not require a special permit. So the finding as to the special permit criteria or the evaluation of the special permit criteria is pertinent, has to be tied to.
Isn't the U-Haul rental also?
Right, but that's already there.
But I was talking about the, the, the nonconforming.
Oh, that's, that's a special permit. Yeah, that's a special permit. Not, not the actual.
How do, what do you think is best to do? We have about eight minutes before our regular meeting is supposed to.
Well, the other question has to do with this use of vehicles for advertising, or the other sort of general question, I think. And I, I don't see any, I mean, if it's an enterprise truck rental, I mean, you mentioned U-Haul specifically, but I think enterprise also, you know, has their words on their, on their truck. Maybe it's not, maybe it's not as bold as the U-Haul advertising. But these, it was clearly indicated that these vehicles that are displayed or proposed to be displayed are also vehicles that are rented. They're not displayed there only for the purpose of advertising. And I think all of the U-Haul vehicles have the same graphics and nomenclature associated with them. So I mean, it would be a hard thing, at least based on our past practice, to consider advertising on vehicles to be a sign under the zoning regulations.
Well, then the, the code said, if it's used mainly for advertising or a substitute for a building, which if they're being rented as well?
Right. Well, a billboard is an off-premises sign. So if you, if they parked the U-Haul vehicle somewhere else, like on I-95 on somebody else's property, you know, and they left it there for, you know, weeks and months at a time, then that would fit the definition of an illegal sign or a billboard. But.
Can we get into the issue of trademark signing?
Well, we don't regulate, you know, sign content. So what, whether we consider their sign to be unacceptable in some way or not, you know, that, I don't think that's something that's under our jurisdiction, in my opinion.
The, right. The, the regulation just says the following signs, it's in the sign section of the code, right? The following signs are not permitted. Any truck, van, wagon, or sound broadcasting vehicle used mainly for advertising or as a substitute for building. I mean, there, there was a claim early on that the building, trademark buildings are prohibited. But I didn't see any evidence that this was a trademark building. It sounds like they, they modified some of the stuff as they went, went around. So I, I didn't see a whole lot of evidence about that.
I, I think for the truck being a sign, it would have to, the, the air from the tires would have to be let out, or it would have to be like a flatbed truck with just a big sign on it, something like that. I think that trucks that are actually in use can't be considered a sign in Guilford because there are so many trucks plastered with signs all over Guilford. And all over every county.
That's the way we took it at that pass.
I think if someone wanted to make the argument that the U-Haul truck was used mainly for advertising, then you'd have to, I mean, how far are you willing to stretch that argument? Are you going to say that, you know, any passerbyer that has a U-Haul truck that's stopping in Guilford stops at our local Dunkin' Donuts or McDonald's, they're going to stop with their U-Haul truck? Like, are they going to get stopped by the police and fined because we don't allow these signs under our zoning code? I think that's a pretty extreme argument to make.
You know, there'd be a, a sign that you would say that's strictly advertising for sure, but have to be planted in one spot and left there all the time. That would make it, if anything at all, that would make it a permanent sign. But when the trucks are being moved around and they're not in one spot, just because they're covered with information, I don't see how you can call that signage on the property. That's definitely doesn't sound right to me at all.
Sounds like there's a consensus on that issue. And that's what I'm gathering, just for our drafting purposes. And we can throw it in.
Someone else?
So I'll kick, again, ask your opinion whether or not we should proceed to the regular meeting. We do have a, an item where we could continue to the discussion within our regular meeting for the special permit criteria, or we could put it forward to another meeting similar to this to discuss it.
You have 65 days after the close of the double hearing, which you, during which you have to act, or by the end of which you have to make a decision. So, but you have got, you've got plenty of time to work on this.
I would agree that this warrants another meeting.
Okay, I would agree. So we, why don't we table the discussion of the special permit criteria to a future date to be agreed upon? Anyone?
I will say, I'll make a motion that, that, what you just said.
Thanks, Frank.
Alan.
Call him. All in favor?
So you won't talk about it later tonight, do you?
We will not talk about this special permit criteria. Correct.
You can leave. You're off the clock.
Okay, so.
You're free to stay.
Yeah.
Who said that? Should, it's costing us money. Be stays, you know that.
George, do I need a, a motion to close the special meeting?